19th, 2025 Board of Alderman Work Session Order at 6:00 PM. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. All right, so we're gonna jump in. We got a busy evening tonight. We got eight items on the agenda for discussion and consideration. So it's gonna be a busy evening. First off, and then also Alderman Johnson, I just want to do a comms check with you real quick. Can you hear us okay?
I can hear you. Can you hear me?
Loud and clear. Who else we got out there? Matt?
You got me. I can hear you.
Right. Who are the other two folks on there?
Noetakers.
Noetakers.
Oh, it's the noetakers. Gotcha. The AI noetakers. Okay. All right. So first up is gonna be a crack seal bid award for Bear Haven and Bluebird Trails. Our city engineer will discuss that with us. Go ahead, Matt.
So we requested bids for crack sealing of Bear Haven and Bluebird Meadow Trails, also with some trail replacement on Bear Haven Trail from damage from a porta john truck. We received two bids, one from Burns &amp; Jones, one from Asphalt Services LLC. Both were responsive bids. Burns &amp; Jones bid came in at about $66,000. Asphalt LLC came in at $37,900. I recommend going forward with their bid. It is a little bit more than what the budget allows for, but this could be amended in a future. In the future. Any questions?
It's just a one time for those specific areas, right? This isn't?
Correct. That is just for this year. Yep.
Okay. No questions for me?
I mean, it is something that we need to have done. Because we have to maintain those according to the lease agreement, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Anything else from the board on item number one? Nothing heard. So we'll move on to item number two. Supplemental agreement for Post Road Phase One project. Back city engineer?
Yeah, Post Road Phase One, when they got into the design, they inspected the box culvert. The box culvert was deemed it needed a full replacement. That was not part of the project scope when we applied for the grants. So we went ahead and went back out to East West Gateway in the county and requested for 10% more funds to cover the additional cost associated with replacing the box culvert. So this is just the supplemental agreement with the little bit of revisions adding the box culvert to the project scope. Accepting the additional 10% in funds.
They did award us some money then?
Yes. Yes.
Okay.
Thanks, Matt. Any questions on item number two? All right. If nothing further from you, Matt, we'll move on to item number three. Item number three is an RBA proposed requirement for occupancy in the event of a change in occupancy or sale of property. This was put forth by Alderman Detweiler and Alderman Nay. Let you guys discuss your RBA.
Several years ago, it doesn't sound like it's on. Is it? Okay. I'm gonna say probably four, maybe five years ago, the board at that time decided to take out where if you were gonna sell your home, you had to have a city occupancy permit, I mean, city occupancy inspection done. And basically for safety and other things. Now, they kept it in the rental program. If you were renting your home and you changed renters, then you still had to have it. But at that point, they said that, you know, everybody was getting inspections from the realtors and other entities, and so they felt like that it was a double inspection. Well, I mean, I didn't agree with it at that time, but I had no vote in the matter. Now, I feel like that in the market that we have today, people are buying homes. Sometimes they're buying them cash, no inspections. And they're doing that to be able to get the home and favorably be able to get the seller to take their contract. And I don't feel that that does justice to the buyer. I know they're the ones submitting it, but I know for a fact that in my own subdivision, it's happened three times in the last year. And I know that they did not have inspections for anything. No code violations, no electrical, nothing. And I don't feel that that's safe. I don't feel that it's safe for the neighbors should an electrical fire occur because we're putting these houses so close together. And if one house catches fire, it causes the fire to spread to another one. So I just feel like we need to go back to making sure that everyone's home, when you move in it, is safe for code violations or other violations. And I just don't agree with not having it for homes that sell because we have it for rentals. So that's my stance on it.
Alderman Nay, any additional comments?
Can I talk on this, please?
Go ahead, Alderman Johnson.
Yes, I was on the board when this thing was passed. It was only three years ago that, when this happened. The purpose of that was that most people get their own occupancy permit. The other purpose of this was is a lot of people buy homes and flip them. So the way the system worked before is you had to get an inspection before you sold the home, and then the people buying the home would have to get an inspection. Now, I don't believe that we should have to force a resident to get an inspection to sell a home. It's totally up to the people buying the home. I do believe that an inspection should come along with an occupancy permit to where before they can move in, they get an inspection by the city to make sure there's no violations and all that. But I don't want to see an inspection being forced on the residents. If they want to sell a home as is, they should have the right to sell the home as is.
I just want clarification. From what I'm hearing, Carla, you're saying you want three, almost like three verification that the house is taken care of? Is that what you're saying? I'm sorry. Like two, like making sure like the seller is doing the right, then another inspection from the homeowner? Is that correct?
I just want to make sure that the seller is transferring a home to the buyer that isn't code deficient.
Okay.
And, you know, I just feel like today, there are a lot of, and I'm just gonna say, young buyers out there that they just want to get in a home. And they don't realize the things that could be in a home that are not up to code. You know, maybe the current owner has changed some of the electrical. Maybe they've done the basement and not gotten an inspection. Anything like that could be. And the people are buying the home and not always knowing what they're getting into until they're in the home and go to do something and it's not working right or whatever. Now, yes, they could go out and get this big, huge, expensive inspection, but then again, that's a whole big another price that they may not want to do. And I just feel like, from what I see in my subdivisions, when houses have turned over, that they have had issues. Well, and for one thing, we've had code changes. GFCIs were not necessary in laundry rooms when my home was built. Apparently it is now. So they're buying a home that doesn't have a GFCI in a laundry room with water that not, that it should be. There's just code changes and things that I think should be kept up to date in a home when someone goes to sell it.
So do you think this would protect the buyers more than anything from potential?
Yes.
Yep.
I do. And yes, the buyers could have their own inspection. I get that. But they are trying to get in a home in a market where everything is so competitive that I think a lot of them are foregoing these inspections.
Yeah. Do you think that if the, if I may, do you think that this is a discussion, but as far as implementation of this, if someone chose to forego a home inspection through the purchasing process, would you want this to then trigger it? But would you want to have this on regardless? What's your proposal here?
I'd like to have it regardless because I feel like some of the home inspections are prompted by the realtors. They have their own people that do inspections. And so sometimes I don't feel like they're going to catch some of the smaller things that we may find as code violations.
One possibility is, I was reading through this and thinking about it, is that we could, instead of mandating the inspection from us, and it would save our resources a little bit, is if you actually just put in that the home inspector that was hired puts a check in the box and signs and says that I have inspected and I can, you know, and that's their license and, you know, they're supposed to be, you know, their companies are supposed to back that. So, I mean, they have some liability at that if they didn't do it. That's one way we could handle that as well, I think, is if that's something, ask the city attorney if he thinks that's something that would be reasonably implemented.
Yeah, that, we would have to review that.
So it's an option potentially that we could use. But either way, I'm just thinking, you know, as far as resources in the city, every sale, because if that would think, and I believe, if I recall the conversation, I was on the board then as well, it was a lot to do with, you know, the impact on staff as well. Not that we're going to shirk our responsibility of ensuring that, you know, residents of Darting Prairie live in safe homes in rental units, but I think this is, that was some of the discussion around it, where this came from. I think that, you know, one thing that I would like to see is if we, if they do choose to have a home inspector, you know, a professional home inspector go in and do this extremely in-depth, multi-point inspection, that they can just check those items that we have in our code to prevent us from having to go in and do, you know, burden our staff when it's already been done.
Well, I don't have a problem with that as long as we require that paperwork in our office to be kept here so that we know that inspection has been done.
Yeah. And I agree.
You know, we can't go on the fact that they say, oh, well, we had an inspection. We need a copy of that inspection here so we can maintain. And even if we want to make up a form that tells what we look for, then that's fine. But we have to have that signed off on before closing.
Right.
So, since I do this for a living, I might be able to put a little bit of a point of clarification on this as it may relate to other municipalities. Let's just use Baldwin as an example, because Baldwin is actually an area that has two types of inspections that are required. Depending on the address, it may fall within the boundaries of the Metro West Fire District. If it does, it requires the city of Baldwin to do what is called an occupancy inspection. Now, they're not looking for anything other than mostly safety violations, you know, tripping hazards, GFCIs in the appropriate rooms, wet spaces, bathrooms, basements, garages, outdoor living spaces, outdoor outlets. Metro West will come in behind that, and sometimes they will do duplicate work. And then there's also the ASHE home inspector. That's an American, that's a certified home inspector who has done a minimum of 300 homes to get a certification. They will all sign and say that they've done the, and there is lots of duplication in that environment over there. But to the point made earlier, people are making changes to their homes. They're making those changes often without permits. So as an example, here in Darting Prairie, there are decks that exist that aren't necessarily code compliant, that would be necessary to really be looked at by a, either a city inspector, which I would, you know, I would promote. But they will also be looked at by the ASHE inspector. And so they will both make notes, and then it's up to the, there's minimum standards that have to be met for the city occupancy. That just says it's a safe home with safe conditions. Okay? No broken windows, no electrical hazards, no leaking pipes, no structural issues on the outside. Anything, it's obvious. That would, that becomes the occupancy part for the city of Darting Prairie to then say, we're good. Now, the greater and more in-depth inspection is gonna be done by the ASHE people. And then it's up to the buyer and seller to negotiate in accordance with the findings. Some of the things that may be found on that inspection report by the ASHE inspector are also the things found by the city inspector. Those must be complied with. Okay? As an example. Anything beyond the minimum of the city becomes a negotiation between buyer and seller and the realtors. Okay? But I would highly recommend, just based on my experience in this area in the last couple of years, the things that I have seen, you know, and people try, but that's why they make Home Depot and Lowe's, and they sell products that don't necessarily get installed correctly or used correctly, or the tools are not correct. So long and short of it is, I'm 100% behind your idea of getting a local Darting Prairie occupancy permit done. Now, there is no ASHE inspector that is gonna sign off for the city. So this is going to have to be a city inspector doing that work. Now typically, just so that you have a understanding, typically a city inspector will get into a property, and unless they find something egregious, they are usually in and out in 30 minutes. And then they complete their report. It's usually written, it's usually digital, and then you get a, you get a report back to your email that tells you the things that are deficient that you need to address. But I would be 100, 110% behind this idea of a city inspection for Darting Prairie. And we would be actually leading the way, for the most part, here in St. Charles County, if we were the ones to step up now and start doing that.
Would that allow, would we need another person for that job?
No.
Okay. Just want to make sure.
Jeff's been doing it. He did it in the past. We had, this was called a health and safety inspection, and it saved lots of people lots of stuff. It's also a guard for the city. They used to do, when they do these inspections, that check on our wastewater management. Had they had the homeowner put in a pool, had they redesigned their backyard, blocking the wastewater movement. And it gives us an opportunity as a city to go in and check the resident. It's a win-win for the city. And on the, what's called, you'll see the budget impact is what? Oh, none. So it doesn't cost us a dime. It barely costs $75. It is a no-brainer.
Typically, the inspections are $100 or more in St. Louis County. The inspector will also go back, and so you give me the list, I get the list fixed. You know, however, sometimes it may take a professional, it may take an electrician or a plumber to fix whatever is discovered. Not necessarily required, but then you notify the city. The inspector goes back to verify that that work has been done. If it has not been done, then there is another potential charge for a revisit, for the, you know, to do the second inspection of those things that are not done. So there is money coming in. But, and then that is for the seller to do. All the buyer needs to do is have that occupancy in hand, that permit in hand, as they register as a citizen for Darting Prairie. And that would be it.
If I could just comment related to staffing, the only concern I have would be for vacation and time out of the office for Jeff. And if there's a timeliness concern, we're gonna have to look at some sort of backup resource. You know, just, so I'm just mentioning that, that we would, we would want to look at making sure we had backup resources so we could keep the sale of the home moving.
Right. Given the downtime, you know, the down market, so to speak, and there's not as many transactions going on as we did, let's say, five, six, seven years ago, there are probably several ASHE inspectors, you know, Fallon, St. Peters, or whatever, who would potentially be somebody that could come in and substitute, you know, as a contract person to do that. But I'm just saying, you know, there's other resources that we could go to to keep things moving. Yeah.
Excellent. Thank you, Alderman Johnson.
Now, for clarification, this bill is asking for an inspection by the person selling the home?
The inspection would need to be done by the person selling the home in order to convey a property that has met code compliance with the city.
But, but the point that comes into there is I should have the right to sell my home as is. It's the person buying the home should have to have everything corrected before they move into the home. But I don't, I don't see that the seller would have to be required to sell, to get a permit to sell a home as is.
In the case of an as-is transaction, that is true. So the person who's buying the home would have to get occupancy by demonstrating that those things have been, the house has been inspected and passed by the city. So to your point, that is true. The seller does not in an as-is transaction, but 99.9% of the homes that are out there are not as-is transactions in this area.
Yeah, I know, but we need to clarify that. And if we put a bill out there, how it's gonna speak to that?
Yep. I agree.
So?
So we want to move this forward then? The show, let's just do the show of hands, who wants to move this forward to the next stage? This is... Okay. So for now, the discussion, I think, is good. Well, let's do that offline, Jeff, because I think that at this point, we've got a lot more to go, and we're all almost in unison here. So this will move forward into, into the next meeting. City attorney, can you put some verbiage together for that? All right. Thank you, guys. Okay. Great. Good discussion on that, and I think that there, you know, we can continue to kind of refine some of our knowledge on this offline. It's kind of a complex subject to a certain extent, but we're gonna have more time to discuss it. It sounds like at least move forward, and then more, you know, we can have some heartier discussions after. So let's go ahead and move on to number, item number five, which is the reconsideration of bill number 2542, Bates Road Phase One, project funding. Oh, I'm sorry. I had, I started to put notes on four when I was on three. Okay, number four. Thank you. RBA proposed increase in Alderman compensation with removal of stipend and addition of cell phone option for city business. This got brought up last time, and really, this, just for the historical value of this, so the folks that are here in the audience that may not know about it. In the budget this year, following a study that we did by Evergreen Studies, which is a firm that basically checks and makes sure that you're paying your employees commensurately to other like cities in the community. Following that study, we went to make sure, we hadn't done one in what, 12 years, Kathy? 13 years? So we wanted to make sure that we were still competitive and we were attracting and retaining talent within our staff. But we also added, you know, just to check with the elected official pay as well. What that, this, well, Kathy, you want to talk about the results? And just a bit of a background for those that are out here, because I see a lot of new faces, and if you're here, I'd like to make sure that you're following along with what we're doing. And this is going back a little bit. So go ahead, Kathy.
Correct. So Aldermanic pay had not been, has not been changed in 13 years. It's $375 a month. The Evergreen study, as was explained by the mayor, it was a comprehensive, I believe, 14-city study to review not only staff compensation as compared to the market, but also elected official compensation. The Evergreen report was conclusive that the, while the pay for the mayor was consistent with the market, the pay for aldermen was not. It was about $100, $100 less than what the market was paying for that position. And so the proposed increase was to reflect that $100 change in pay to compensate them fairly in the market for like cities.
And with that, thank you, Kathy. We had also, there was also an additional stipend for electronics, for cell phone usage, because most aldermen communicate with the residents for their personal cell phone, because they're not issued a cell phone. Emails are done through their personal computer, a personal cell phone. They don't have a computer here at City Hall. So there was an additional stipend in there. But I think what ultimately is that what's being proposed, and I'll hand this over to the alderman here who sort of put this together, is that they're maybe wanting to separate and change some of that. So just as a preface, before we dive into this, because of historical value and so many new faces, but I will hand over to Alderman Detweiler, Alderman Nay, and Alderman Gettemeyer, who are the ones who wanted to resurrect this for further discussion. Thank you.
Yes, I wanted to resurrect it because I didn't like the way it came up and was brought forth last time by Arnie Deanhoff, who was here. He was basically, you know, telling us that we should work for free, that, you know, Ladue and Frontenac and all of those don't pay their aldermen. And, you know, that we elected to take this position. Well, yes, we did choose to take this position, but I can tell you that there is not a day, maybe Sunday during the week, that I am not dealing with my citizens in Ward Two or one, someone here on the city staff. And it doesn't end at 5 o'clock. It goes on till sometimes 8 and 9 o'clock. And it, to me, if you're doing the job correctly, you're putting the time in, and you're not just sitting up here on Wednesdays. And so I feel like a lot of us, all of us do put the time in. And, you know, it's been 13 years since we received an increase up here. And I certainly feel like that it, if the study that was used is a reputable study, and they've done a good job on the staff, I feel like they wouldn't have said that we are behind in compensation if we weren't. And so that's why I brought this back, because I thought last week, or last Wednesday, a week ago, when Arnie brought this up, you know, we had a government shutdown, we had all kinds of things, government employees not getting their pay. Well, they're back to work. They got their pay. And, you know, everybody is getting what they would have normally got. So I don't feel like our positions should be put on a back burner when our positions show that we are behind in the pay scale. And that's just my feelings on it. I don't, I didn't care to have the stipend. And I know something was mentioned about a cell phone or about a iPad or something. That's fine too, but I think we could use the extra $100 a month to upgrade my phone or add to my plan, which I've already had to do, and print copies at home rather than have to have staff print the copies that we have to have and get delivered, so.
Yeah. And I think for context of why I brought that up too, is I think it kind of create, there was more of a disagreement. It was bundled into one, so it had to be voted on for the $100 additional monthly addition of the salary, and then the $150 cell phone electronics usage stipend. And I think the, generally, the stipend was not liked. So since... So since they were bundled together, it was disapproved, but I think at this point, it's coming back individually as a salary set for the aldermen to add the $100 a month. So that way, it's just, you know, it's a lesser of a burden on the city budget, so. Alderman Nay and Alderman Gettemeyer, do you guys have any additional comments on this?
Well, the only comment that I really have is, like, the removal of the stipend cuts it, the expense back in half. And for a lot of us, I, my plan is super cheap, so I certainly don't need that, but I, I know that putting us with market rates seems, seems reasonable, given the period of time over a decade. But again, I, and I'm sensitive to that. I'm a retired federal employee, so I'm sensitive to the fact that the timing wasn't wonderful, but I do think that this seems reasonable, given the fact that we yanked back the stipend.
Good. Yeah, and, and, okay, excellent, good points. Anybody else, any other alderman want to comment? So, you know, we're, so this is not, that's not in here, this is not on the agenda. So do we want to make a motion to put this back on the agenda for the, the next meeting to have it as a, an item that's only, that this time only includes the salary adjustment of, what is it, $97 additional per month for the alderman's salary?
Hundred.
A hundred, a hundred even, okay. I think we just rounded it up.
I make a motion to put it back on the agenda as an ordinance for next meeting.
Motion by Alderman Detwiler.
Second.
Second by Alderman Wilson, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? None heard. Moving on. City Attorney, obviously, can you put that together on for the next meeting? Okay, now, number five. Make sure I mark it appropriately here. RBA reconsideration of bill number 2542, Bates Road Phase One, project funding. Alderman Nay, Alderman Gettemeyer, Mayor Whitteman. Last week, we had a vote on Bates Road, and I am just, I'm unable to vote on this. This is a, because it's using federal funding, I had to abstain, and I am, I'm going to refrain from commenting too much, but it's more of a statement of fact. The board, it failed because of a tie vote, because of my abstention. But there has, has been some additional information that's come to light, and in the beginning of that meeting, when we did vote, there was additional information that was brought then. And one of the primary things that we learned in that meeting was there was, there was a off-road option that allowed all three lanes to stay, that was, I believe, one of the main points of contention from the folks in Ward Two that utilized Bates Road is, in which, I'll say, I agree with. I think that that's, that's a logical approach. And the idea was that the initial first glance of the design was going to take three lanes and put it down to two, and that created some contention there. The alternatives, which we learned from the, the, the woman who came here and spoke with us, I believe her name is Ms. Brower, is that there are possibilities for off-road options, and it's, I believe, something to the effect of like a six-foot-wide sidewalk. Driving down Bates Road, now you look in front of King's Mill, I think it's King's Mill, is that the name of the, King's Mill? They already have something very similar to that, and it's considered a shared sidewalk. Considering that the majority of people I see on bikes around here are children, I find that to be a much more effective and safer alternative, and I think that it also satisfies the concerns of residents of losing the third turn lane. So that being said, there was some, there was a bit of discussion, and ultimately, the way that we've done this, even though it was voted in for the sake of, well, let me just, let me go ask the city attorney to explain how this was done. So I'm not a lawyer, so I'll let him clarify how the process went, of what we did and why we're talking about it again, because I see a couple of Ward Two folks in here.
Right. So at the last meeting, the, the bill failed. As the mayor explained, there was a tie vote, three to three, the bill was not approved. Under the rules of procedure adopted by the board, there's what's allowed is a motion for reconsideration that can be had at the next meeting, that motion being made by a party, a person on the prevailing side. So, Mr. Mayor, what we have tonight is the option for the motion for reconsideration of that bill number 2542.
Okay. All right. So that's why we're talking about it. I just wanted to, want to kind of set the stage work there, and then I want to, so it's Alderman Nay and Alderman Gettemeyer, are there any additional comments or commentary that you want to discuss about as far as resurrecting or bringing this back to, to bear and to vote on?
Yeah, the one thing that was real important to me was the center turn lane, and that it was, it seemed to be being thrown out last meeting. I was definitely against it. But with the changes and making sure that that change, that turn lane is in place, I think it's a good option.
I have a question. We got to read it two times.
No, it's already been read twice, so this will just go to a vote.
Thank you.
Well, we have to, let's clarify a little.
Right. So it, when the item's on the agenda, if there's a motion for reconsideration made that is approved, then the item could either be voted on or postponed if the board so chooses to the next meeting.
Another thing that I'd just add on to this, this was the Phase One. The Phase One is strictly the design, and that's where all the input from the community can be had. And we've got, what, two or three other times to vote on this? So to go ahead with the design thing and have input from the community, sounds like the best way to go.
Absolutely. And to that point, and to pile on to that, that comment, the board can, you know, squash something if, if it doesn't align with what the community wants. If it doesn't align with what the board's pushing forward, they can do that. And as mayor, I, that's certainly where my intention is as well, is to ensure that we listen to the residents, and that's why, you know, we really wanted to push for these other options that align with the concerns of the community. Trust me. As a matter of fact, I drove down Bates Road today, and, and I noticed there was a bus stop there, right on Bates Road, you know. So there, there's a lot of these things that we've heard from the residents that live there every day, and I live across Ward Three. So I, technology's closed, though, so I use Bates Road a lot more lately. But at the same time, you know, we're, we're, you know, certainly, our ears are tuned in to the residents, and we appreciate everybody's comments. We'll continue to have open engagement on this. We know it's an important topic, but I feel very comfortable with the, the broader side of shared sidewalk, especially, like I said, given that we don't have a lot of, you know, going down Bates Road, I don't think I've ever seen any distance biker trying to make it down that road. But I have seen there's a lot of kids, that their parents, you know, and I think a sidewalk's a much better option, and I think that's probably the right way to go. But either way, I will have to abstain on any vote, considering my day job as a federal employee, I cannot have any, you know, vote on federal tax dollars or federal anything. So I will have to abstain. So that, that being said, once again, City Attorney, what is, I need to entertain a motion for reconsideration, is that correct?
Yeah, in the regular meeting, when the item is on the agenda, there could be a motion for reconsideration made by a person that was on the prevailing side, which in this case, because the bail, because the bill failed, would be a person who voted no.
Okay, so this is not on the agenda for the regular meeting this time, so do we need to put it on the, the next meeting's agenda? Is it, is it on here again? Okay, we did put it back on. All right, great. So we will go through on the regular agenda, and we will talk about it then. Any further discussion from the board on item number five? Okay. And I'll say lastly, we've got three more. Number six, FY26 budget and capital plan ordinance. City Administrator, Kathy, would you want to go ahead and take this?
Thank you. Item number five, bill number 2558 on tonight's agenda for a first reading is the FY26 budget. Again, I just wanted to thank staff for their hard work in putting together the budget and the board's hard work in reviewing every line item. And I don't know how many slides we had, probably over 100, in a very long work session meeting. It was a good meeting. I included in the, the email that I went out with you for the amended packet, a summary of what was discussed, what changes were made. And again, it's on for a first reading. I'm happy to answer any questions, and if there was any concerns with any of the changes from the work session to tonight's presented budget, the board can always amend it on the floor to correct something or make a change in, in what they are interested in. So just, when that comes up for discussion, we can, we can certainly entertain an amendment if that's necessary. And again, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Kathy. Any, any comments, additional comments on FY26 budget and capital plan ordinance?
I would just like to make a suggestion that if any of the aldermen do have any questions or concerns, to get ahold of Kathy before the meeting, so she has a chance to prepare for your question to be answered correctly.
All right. Thanks, Alderman Johnson. Alderman Detwiler.
Yeah. I'd just like to thank Kathy and the staff for all their hard work. I don't think most of us on this board, even though some of us are new, have ever had the opportunity to go through a budget like this before. It was always just given to us and said, this is your budget. So I appreciate the fact that we were, had some input, and that she took into consideration some of the changes that we did ask to be made.
Anybody else? None heard? Okay. All right, we're going to move on to the next, item number seven, multi, I'm sorry, go ahead, Kathy, you wanted to say some more?
Correct, sorry. So the multifamily moratorium. I just wanted to give a short update to the board that P&amp;Z has confirmed the survey questions to go out to our stakeholders, and I will be working with Rose, our IT manager, to put that in a format that we can easily collate any of the data that we receive. If any of the board members have a suggestion for a stakeholder that they think should be included, I'm happy to, to include that as well, and I will send those questions out to the board with the list of stakeholders, once we have that survey format finalized. But the goal is to get that out as soon as possible, so we can get data back and keep moving on the moratorium discussion.
All right. Thank you, Kathy. Okay. Let's move on to the last item, is a review of the, tonight's Board of Aldermen agenda. If everybody's had a chance to, to look at the agenda, are there any questions or concerns or comments any of the board members would like to make on the meeting for the regular meeting, or the, what's on the agenda for the regular meeting tonight? Okay, none heard? All right, we'll move on to staff communications. City Attorney?
I have nothing, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. City Engineer, Matt?
I have nothing, Mayor.
Okay. City Administrator, Kathy?
Great. The city's annual Tree of Lights event was Friday, November 14th. We were blessed with really mild weather and had a large turnout for this special event. In partnership with the Salvation Army, this event marks the start of the holiday season and reminds us of the importance of giving through the Salvation Army and other organizations that do good works for those in need in our community. City Hall will be closed for the Thanksgiving holiday on Thursday, November 27th, and Friday, November 28th. And Breakfast with Santa is Saturday, November 29th, that is the Saturday of Thanksgiving weekend, featuring Chris's pancakes and, of course, Santa. We have our very own DP Santa, who will be there for photos, et cetera. There are two seedings for breakfast, one at 9:30 and one at 10:30. This is a really fun family event, and it's very low-key for families that are looking for a holiday event without the usual crowds and stress. You know, we don't have a large, a large gathering for this, so it's, you get, you get to enjoy seconds and thirds on the pancakes and tang. And it's a tang. Just tang. Big throwback there, huh? And just to note, the registration is required for this event.
Or you can also just pour sugar into a glass and drink. All right. Thank you, City Administrator. Alderman?
I do have a quick question. I know we make some purchases. Does, is, was somebody on our staff certified to drive, fly drones?
I'm for drone purchase.
No?
You mean for, for the, what do you mean?
I saw a drone.
For the drone that we bought?
Yeah.
Yeah, for the, for photo, for taking photos? I don't believe that the level of drone that we purchased is one that would require a license. That's my understanding, and I would defer to City Administrator to clarify that.
I would agree with that. We may need the city attorney to clarify, but we're, it was purchased for the sole purpose of being able to video our events, so that we can keep our, our website updated and refreshed with new, new video. It's not being used, at, at least at this point, for any other purpose.
Okay. No, I, I was concerned, because I know I'm dealing with things like that right now, and it's like certain things you can't do or certain highs, so that's what I'm concerned with, and I just don't want us to get our hands slapped for any, any, any odd reason. Okay. Thank you very much.
Okay, there's no license required for flying a drone in the immediate area. The only precautions you have to take is that you don't fly in a restricted area, or you don't fly in, over government buildings or over military bases, because they'll get shot down. So other than that, I think we're safe to go.
Okay.
That from our pilot, who's a pilot who's also an alderman.
Sounds good.
Thank you, Alderman Nay. Did that answer your question, Alderman Wilson?
Yeah, yeah, just wanted to make sure.
Great. All right. Anybody else on the board have any other thoughts, comments? A couple people want to save it to the regular meeting? Okay. All right, that leaves it to me. Given that we just reviewed it, we're going to vote on it now, I do want to just pile on. Kathy and the team did a great job preparing for the budget. The board, we had a special session. We were in here, there was nobody else around. Nobody came to it, surprise, surprise, you didn't see a big crowd coming in to hear people talk about budget. But at the same time, the board stuck around to the late hours of the evening and went through line by line, every, let me just put that into perspective, line by line of this packet, every single item on here, and talked about each one. And the board, each of the, the staff members had developed their own budget around there, they presented it to the board, put a lot of good work into that, and I want to thank the, the staff and thank Kathy for shepherding that process, and also the board for putting the hours and the time in to ensure that we're all on the same page and we're all singing from the same sheet of music. Greatly appreciate that, and, and we're looking forward to the good changes that are going to come from this collaborative effort on our budget, so. That being said, I got a couple other comments, but I'll save that to the end of the regular meeting as well. Go back to my notes here, I think that's it. Okay. All right. Now, did a motion to, motion to adjourn work session?
Moved.
Moved by Alderman Gettemeyer, second by Alderman Detwiler, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? None heard? Declare this meeting adjourned, and we will reconvene at 7:00 for the regular November 19th Board of Aldermen meeting. Thank you.